As the premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here is tonight's meeting agenda. Stay tuned, the Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly.
Call this regular meeting of the Williams, of the James City County Board of Supervisors to order, excuse me. Good evening. Mr. Porter, if you'd call the roll.
Starting on my far right, Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Mr. Eisenhower.
Here.
Mr. Eisenhower represents the Jamestown District and is Vice Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Ms. Sadler.
Here.
Ms. Sadler represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powhatan District. Ms. Larson.
Here.
Ms. Larson represents Berkeley District and is Chair of the Board of Supervisors. And I am Bill Porter, Enthron County Administrator and Adam Kinsman, County Attorney.
Thank you very much. We will have a moment of silence this evening followed by our pledge. Our tonight's pledge will be led by Owen Snowden, a 4th grade student at Clara Bird Baker. Owen enjoys playing basketball, soccer, and games with his family. He recently took part in Days of Discovery Summer Camp through Parks and Recreation. I would ask, as we have a moment of silence this evening, that we keep the victims of 9/11 in our hearts. Thank you. Owen? Thank you so much, Owen. You did an excellent job. I'd like to give you... Owen, I'm gonna bring you a sort of... Come on up, Owen. We'd love you to run this meeting tonight. There you go. And here's the pen. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thank you all so much. With that, that brings us to public comment. Do we have any speakers this evening? Okay, thank you. That moves us right into presentations. We have presentation of new police officers and we do have Deputy Chief Steve... Oh, there he is. Good evening.
Good evening, Board.
Evening.
It's my pleasure, especially on this anniversary of 9/11, to introduce our newest officers who have made the commitment and dedication to protect and serve their community. First, I have Officer Brian Crosby. Brian, born in Connecticut, came to Virginia to attend Randolph College where he graduated with a degree in business and economics. After graduating, he served as a resident director and assistant lacrosse coach for the college. Then he decided to come where he knows where it's a good place to be. Also, Officer Tom Frick. Tom is originally from Pennsylvania where at the age of 19, he graduated from Thomas Edison State College with a bachelor's degree in history. That degree brought him to Williamsburg where he moved to work at Colonial Williamsburg, first in the costume department and then later as a special conservator of the peace for their security department. Tom was also awarded the academic award for his basic academy class at the Hampton Roads Academy. Officer Seagroves on my far right. Elizabeth Seagroves is a Navy dependent from Newport News. She comes to us from William and Mary University where she serves as, served as a police officer. Prior to that, she worked security at Busch Gardens. She is a graduate from Hampton University and just recently received her master's degree in forensic science from St. Leo University. Officer Kara Leapoon was born in California but spent most of her life here in Virginia. She is a graduate of ECPI University where she graduated with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a concentration in homeland security. She also had the distinction of graduating with honors and served as the valedictorian of her class. She comes to us from Williamsburg Police Department. And finally, Officer Brianna Sutton. Brianna was born in Illinois but moved to Williamsburg when she was very young. She attended and graduated Jamestown High School where she was an outstanding volleyball, basketball, and track and field participant. She then went on to Christopher Newport University where she graduated with a double major in both criminology and Spanish language and literature. While at Christopher Newport, she was an All-American in volleyball and track and field competing in the heptathlon. She then went on to serve Christopher Newport University as a police officer and now is here with us in James City. So, welcome.
We'd like to get a picture if we could.
Absolutely.
When does the lacrosse team start practice?
And the volleyball team?
This evening, I would like to recognize the Jamestown High School Envirothon team led by Ms. Rebecca Elton. Envirothon is an environmental science competition where students compete in the areas of wildlife, aquatics, forestry, soils, and a special topic. This year's special topic was grassland management at the state competition and rangeland management at the national competition. Students complete written tests in each subject area and also prepare an oral presentation about a problem that concerns the special topic. The Jamestown High School Envirothon team went to the state competition in May where they placed first, beating out 13 teams from across Virginia. This earned them a trip to the national competition in... Pocatella, Idaho, as the team representing Virginia. Even in this very unfamiliar environment, the team competed at a high level. They came in first in wildlife and earned the highest score for their oral presentation. Overall, the team placed third out of 50 teams from the U.S., Canada, and China. Each team member was given $1,000 in scholarships as prize for their hard work and achievement. We are very proud of these students and their teachers that went with them and helped them and wanted to recognize them for their achievement. So, we have one for the team. Ms. Elton, did you want to come up and... Well, we're gonna call each student up, yes, but I'm gonna give this one to you because this is for the whole Envirothon team. So, congratulations. Thank you. So, you can stay up here when we call your students, yes. Audrey Root. Lisa Small. Rachel Smith. Anna Song. Is this Joanne, 'cause I... Joanna.
Joanna Sotopoulos.
There you go. Thank you. Congratulations. So, I'll see... Would you all like to come down?
Hey, come up too. Our other coach, Charlie Dube.
I have to say that Mr. Dube is probably one of your, one of the biggest supporters. I know he tried to get my daughter interested when she was at Jamestown. He roams the halls trying to... So, he's done an excellent job, obviously. So, congratulations. Congratulations. Outstanding.
Will you just stay down there, Rick?
Yes, probably. Say something. Mr. Dube, do we understand that you were Mr. Hippel's teacher in high school? Yeah, and you survived. Congratulations.
See what you did?
Yeah. Looky here. You should be very proud. Yes.
I'll make sure he has a A in that.
There you go. All right. That brings us to our Clean County Commission Annual Update. Peg Borman, Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening and to the Board, Mr. Porter, Mr. Kinsman, ladies and gentlemen. It's an honor for us to be here this evening to give you our annual update of all the things that we've tried to do this past year, or at least during the fiscal year. With us, the Commissioners are... I'm the Chair and we have the current members. There's Charles Lauterman, Mark Myring, Betty Peterson, Alexa Provost, and Kevin Radcliffe. And we also have a new appointee that we're waiting to have made official, and that's Emma Zarin Newman. And with me, I'm happy to have Donna L. C. I'm trying, I'm practicing. For five years, I've been practicing. Okay, the next slide. Our fall of 2017 was a Good Neighbor Environment Grants. And these projects included the neighborhood litter and debris cleanup, walking trails improvements, entryway landscaping, playground upgrades, multiple beautification of common areas with sustainable plants, and erosion control measures. And our winners are Berkeley Green, Fairway Villas, Kings Point, Seasons Trace, Skiff's Creek Terrace, Stonehouse, and Westmoreland. We're really proud of this particular event that we've... This was the fourth annual Litter and Recycling Expo and we held it out at Jolly Pond Convenience Center. We had a great time out there. It was in November. It was our most successful one because we did have a targeted audience. And we approached the citizens that were taking, that took time to come and dispose of their trash and recycling. We were able to further educate them with, and, excuse me, recruit new volunteers. We also had the police presence which helped us to educate citizens about covering the loads that they bring out. Our next one, the fifth annual Litter and Recycling Expo, will also be out there again this year on November the 3rd. We plan to have several different activities and different things that the community can join in with. And we invite all of you to come and join us. It'll be from 9 to 2. And we invite any of the citizens in the county to come and be with us. We did a lot of community education and outreach events. We collaborated with the schools. James River Elementary had the Recycling Rangers after school. Earth Day at Norridge, that was a special event. Spring Carnival at Blatant Elementary. We gave prizes and educational materials for the Stonehouse Elementary School. We worked with War Hill, with the group, with the tour of the Jolly Pond Convenience Center and their Adopt a Spot. Career Day at Matoka Elementary, that was eye-opening. We partnered with William &amp; Mary on various outreach and educational initiatives. We also worked with Parks and Recreation Environmental Education Day Summer Camp. We did a Jolly Pond Convenience Tour for the Girl Scouts. We did the James River Fest at Jamestown Beach. Several regional Ask HR Green events. Did a Fido Fest in the cold winter of February at Jamestown Beach. We did Chamber and Tourism Alliance Team. We teamed up to clean up a presentation. We attended the Virginia Recycling Association Conference in Virginia Beach. Attended the Williamsburg Area Garden Club Arbor Day Event. We spoke to Mount Vernon Methodist Church ladies with the recycling presentation. Participated in the Abraham Frank Block Party. And we celebrated Will Barnes Volunteer Day Appreciation Event, which everyone that came to that, I think, had a great time. And it was a great event honoring a wonderful man that we all know. Our quarterly Clean Business Forum, we held the third quarter. We hosted here with Ball Metal giving a presentation on their recycling projects. And that was, the awardee was Harris Teeter at Marketplace in Lightfoot. Fourth Quarter was Dollar General in Grove. Third Quarter was Real Tech Community Services in Ford's Colony. And the second Quarter was JSG Corporation. That was quite a place to visit because they do a lot of mining back in there that I had no idea what they were doing. Adopt a Spot. We now have nine different areas in the county that are volunteers with. The James City County Ruetans on Centerville Road. Five Forks Ruetans at Jamestown Beach Event Park. Eisenhower Anheuser-Busch, I'm sorry, Mr. Eisenhower. I almost got you in there.
I'll take it.
Anheuser-Busch has Capital Trail out by Jamestown High School. Ball Metal does Endeavor Drive in Grove. Williamsburg Plantation is on Long Hill Road. Boy Scout Troop 414 takes care of the Croker Road Commuter Parking Lot. We have the Preservation at Stonehouse has three different spots that they are now taking charge of cleaning up. War Hill High School, we're not sure exactly who all participates in that, but they're cleaning up around the pond, so... And then we have the newest one is Print Pack at McClos Circle. And our big one for the year is the Countywide Spring Cleanup. This was the 40th annual year and I can say I've been on almost all 40 years, so... But this one was a little bit spectacular in the fact that we had a lot of increases. We did 38 cleanup sites, which was up from 25, which is 44% increase. We had 313 volunteers, up from before to 29, 27% increase. We had 13.4 tons of roadside litter and that was up from 8.5, 37% increase. I think we had a little bit more at this time because we focused on the road sides instead of backyards and attics and whatever else. We had 180 tires that we got away off of the road sides and that hopefully has killed a lot of mosquitoes homes. Then we had the Volunteer Appreciation Picnic at Veterans Park. And everyone that came, I think, really enjoyed that and we plan to do it again. For our DEQ Litter Grant Reporting, we had 3,725 volunteer hours, which equates into $76,474 in kind services. And that was an increase of 19%. We had 12 group presentations with a total of approximately 725 in attendance. We had 10 staffed displays with approximately 2,800 attending. We did six unstaffed displays. We have given out materials such as coloring books, litter bags, pencils, stickers, pocket ashtrays, pens, snack clips, letter openers, recycling tattoos, and fans. We've put brochures out, emails, Facebook postings, newsletters, newspaper articles, PSAs, radio and TV, also on Twitter and website. 65 total cleanup events with 800 volunteers. That's not including our spring cleanup with 1,116 cubic yards of litter. And we had 15,600 cubic yards collected from the Jolly Pond Road by those doing community service or probationers or whatever. Keep James City County Beautiful. We've now completed a whole year of being with that. And we hope that we'll continue to have the volunteers come in that we've saw already. We did a litter index of 50 stretches of James City roadways. And the most litter observed, and I'll shake my head on this one, was in the Stonehouse District again. And I'm working too hard up there for that to keep happening, so I don't know what I'm gonna do, but get out there with a stick, I guess. We had five watersheds, 180 square miles, 6 and 1/2 hours, and we had five scores that were working on that. And that was quite an interesting adventure because we went the back roads that you don't usually travel and some of the areas that we don't always see just on our daily basis, so... It was quite interesting. Might take some of you along with me next time. We have quarterly community meetings which, our next one will be on October the 4th at the Rec Center from 6 to 7. I invite any and all of you to come and join us. We had a subcommittee, which we're thankful to all of you that passed the zero tolerance for litter policy. We've done the Bottles in Blue campaign at all the parks and rec centers. And we value our volunteers and solicit anyone who would like to come and join us. We have long-term as well as short-term projects that we're able to offer to help do it with us. So, is there any questions that you might have?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. And I would say that Ms. Borman, you and your committee are giving us more than every penny we could ever offer you. You are a dynamic group who've been working very hard to make this a cleaner community and I think the citizens really appreciate what you're doing, except when you pull up to them and threaten to report them for throwing something out the window. But even then, you do it with such a good heart that I think they have to respect you for it.
I try.
And Donna Lexi is just doing a fantastic job in making sure that everything that the county can provide in support for your efforts is there. And I know she's a very creative and enthusiastic person committed to this job. So, thank you all for all the good work you're doing.
Thank you for those kind words. We are a good team. We work together very closely. And we're excited about having the Keep James City County Beautiful volunteers that have come and joined with us. There's some of them come once in a while and some of them come on a regular basis. So, we do have a lot of good citizens in the county. Does anybody else have anything?
I just have a comment in that I'm, I've always been very aware of litter and tried to do my best not to litter. But having you all so involved, I mean, I almost chased somebody down on 64 because they flicked out a cigarette butt and I was like thinking about the plastic and the fish and then they were gonna eat it. And so, it just makes me very aware and I talk to my kids about it. And so, I do, I agree with Supervisor McGlinnan and I think it is very important. The amount of trash is ridiculous and the amount of resources and time that is being used that way. And we are very lucky to have such strong volunteer presence because otherwise, we would just be overcome. So, people really need to throw their trash in the trash can. So, anyway, I really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you very much. We would like to impress upon all of our citizens that it's not our county, it's your county, and you need to help us keep it clean. Because a lot of work goes into these, cleaning up the roadways and so forth. And when I see these blatant people throw it out, I am prone to run them down. But some of it is, you know, comes from the back of pickup trucks that you don't even think that you're putting it in there because I know a few young men that throw things in the back of their truck and they never think that it's gonna come out down the road. But they hear from me. Anyway, but thank you for allowing us to give this presentation this evening. And we hope that you all have a safe coming up events and whatever we're gonna have. And everybody stay safe and without harm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we move to our VDOT quarterly update and we have... Oh, I'm sorry.
She was just gonna keep on going.
Yes. Designating Fall Prevention Awareness Week 2018, Rebecca Vennroot and Chief Ryan Ash.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, you're on it.
So, good evening. We are here today to talk about fall prevention awareness, which is in regards to our elderly residents 65 and older. In 2018 session, the Virginia General Assembly passed a Senate Joint Resolution and a House Joint Resolution designating the third full week of September as Fall Prevention Awareness Week. So, launching off of that, we are here today to talk about doing the same designation for James City County. The, some of the reasons for designating and bringing awareness to falls for residents 65 and older is falls are the leading cause of unintentional fatal and non-fatal injuries and hospitalizations among Virginians 65 and older. Fear of falling can significantly affect an individual's independence and quality of life. And fall prevention coalitions can raise public awareness and promote effective prevention strategies. Here in James City County, as you are aware, residents aged 65 and older comprise approximately 24.7% of the population in 2017 in the county.
When, a couple of years ago, the fire department was noticing an increase in calls for specifically for mobility-related emergencies. So, they could be anything from someone who'd fallen and just needed help getting back up but wasn't injured. They could be falls with fractures or falls that led to other things above fractures but even unconsciousness and other types of things. And we would go to these and we realized that it was a number of individuals we were going to sometimes multiple times per day to help with lift assistance. And then there was a number of people we were going to 20, 30 times a year, sort of for the same type of emergency. We thought this is, that's what we do. We go and we take them to the hospital, we treat them, but we're not really working on the prevention side of how we can stop that emergency from occurring or really get them assistance they need. Often, they didn't need a hospital or maybe they needed a hospital initially but needed some other type of treatment along the way. And that's where we connected with social services. And that's where we connected with social services and realized that we had access to the patient and to the citizen who needed help. They had access to all of the resources that we needed to connect them. So, looking at our calls for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen and eighteen, you'll see that mobility-related emergencies is the bottom one there. Went over thirty-five hundred calls. So, they exceeded medical complaints, which are general illness-type complaints, vehicle accidents, chest pains and cardiac problems, breathing problems. They were our highest call type. So, we realized that this was important enough that we included it in the strategic plan when we were working through the two thousand and thirty-five strategic plan. And we quickly started working with social services on identifying programs that we could try to work through those challenges.
So, what we've listed here is under Goal Five, Exceptional Public Services, there is an operational initiative to develop at the time what we called Mobile Integrated Healthcare, our Community Paramedicine Program. So, we got together with our departments, and we talked about what that would actually look like and what we could actually start with. So, we have started with three initiatives to help bring awareness and to help, as Chief Ash was saying, to reduce the number of calls and assist the individuals who need assistance in their home. So, the first program that we instituted is a program called Remembering When. It's a fire and fall prevention program. We had two staff, one from social services and one from the fire department, who were awarded a scholarship to go to training. And now, they conduct joint home assessments and make recommendations to help improve the safety of individuals. The second is a program that we call CONNECT, which stands for Community Outreach Network, Education, Care, and Thrive. And that is where we do, again, joint home visits with fire EMS and social services staff. So, the individuals are identified by fire EMS staff who goes out to the home, and then they're referred to social services staff who then works with the family and works with the individual to provide them the services that they need. We also have brought on the police department for referrals and have done in-service training at both roll call for police as well as all the shifts in the fire department. The third program that we do is an adult multidisciplinary team, and this includes a multitude of entities. So, we have social services, fire EMS, police, but we have several community providers that we work with. Peninsula Agency on Aging, Colonial Behavioral Health, some of our local faith-based organizations. Also, animal control is there, the Parks and Rec Senior Lounge folks are there. So, it's just everybody who is working with seniors, particularly vulnerable seniors in our area. And we provide information on activities that are going on because we really wanna promote or eliminate social isolation. So, we want to promote positive activities that they can do and really disconnect them to what's going on so they can get out. And, but along with that, we need to make sure that they're mobile to do that. So, the last thing we want to talk a little bit about is program statistics. So, with our Remembering When program, so far, there have been eleven home visits that have been conducted. We need to do about twenty-five by November two thousand and eighteen. So, we've started to partner with different entities to make referrals. So, those have been very successful and very well received. As far as our CONNECT program, at the time that we sent this presentation in, at the end of July, there had been, there were seventy-four referrals. Well, since then, since the program started at the end of March till September seventh, there have been ninety-two referrals from the fire department, thirty-five of which have directly involved individuals who have fallen or who have required a lift assist. So, we're getting the right folks. Now, we just need to work on building the capacity to be able to serve these individuals. So, the services that we provide are establishing home health, ramp resources, any kind of community services that they need. A lot of these individuals aren't aware that they may qualify for services under social services. They may think because they are, you know, not of a lower income, or they just may not know that they qualify. So, really, once they get identified, we work to connect them. So, it's been a great partnership that we've had with the fire department as long as, along with the police department. So, for more information, we actually have several individuals that work on this program. So, in the audience, I'd like to recognize we have Battalion Chief Jason Sweet from the fire department and Ellie Rest, who really has been the most instrumental. She's our social services representative who makes all the initial phone calls and sets people up. So, they're our dream team, and they're the ones who also did the training and do the Remembering When program. And then we have Sergeant Marshawn, and then we have Sergeant McClair, who are representatives from the police department. So, we have a regular meeting where we talk about this program and how we can work best to keep it going and to help people.
I thought when you mentioned that these were your dream team, and their name's Sweet and Rest, something's going right with this. But I did find that the statistics were stunning about the number of service calls that were related to falls. Over fifteen percent of the calls for the whole year. And obviously, this is an area where some good education and some techniques that folks might be able to use to help their balance and think a little bit more about how they're moving around would be very, very helpful, save some money, and also improve quality of life. So, thanks very much for bringing this program to us.
I liked the program very much, and it reminds me of when we started with, we were getting a lot of fires in James City County. So, we went to fire prevention and started looking at smoke detectors and that sort of thing. And the fire department got ahead of it, and they said, what can we do to stop these fires? We can put them out, but how can we prevent them? And I see we're doing the same thing here and with the human side of it. So, that's very good to see, and appreciate all the effort of everybody and all the hard work. So, thank you very much for that, for our citizens.
Rebecca, do you all have a list of citizens that you are directly working with? How would folks know to look into this? Are you contacting them, folks who have already experienced these problems? Or how does that work getting out?
At this time, it's a direct referral from the fire department or from the police department. So, we haven't necessarily advertised this to the public. We do advertise community events that are occurring as far as the social isolation through the multidisciplinary team. But as far as the CONNECT program, that's a direct referral because these are folks who have the highest level of need that we service. With the Remembering When, we do take referrals from, a lot of times, they're community agencies who are aware of individuals who need the assistance.
Will you all be coming back to us with the statistics, a follow-up next year to see if there's been an impact or if those have increased, which may not be any reflection? It's just showing that this is something that we need to continue to dive into.
One of the interesting things I think we're running into with this is right now, as Rebecca said, it's just referral-based. So, we basically, we get a call for service, we respond there. And while we're there, we either notice that the events that maybe led to that injury or in general their health, maybe the home life, things we see around the house, could be a good referral. When the firefighter paramedics do in their report, they're able to add some additional information. It automatically gets sent to social services the next morning. So, Ellie can hop on, call in them, and get in those referrals. So, we're getting that taken care of in a quick manner. But today, it's only the people that we found sort of in a crisis mode at that point, that the events already occurred. We haven't figured out really how do we get on the front side of it. And we've seen such a number of referrals just out of patients we've encountered, much less if we are now at the point of, you know, a public view of telling, if you know someone in your neighborhood, refer them to us. We expect this to really take off. So, we're trying to figure out how to handle that. The other side, we see on the data side of this collection is how do you, struggling a little bit with how do you measure the value of the program? Because we're finding them sometimes on the first time they've called now, we don't know how many times they would have called because perhaps we're intervening before they call again. So, we're trying to figure out how to, what data points do we measure this over the next year to really measure it? We know it's successful because we see that the people have the help they need and aren't calling again. But we don't know how many, did I eliminate twenty-five calls or did I eliminate one call? And that's part of our struggle right now.
And I know people that haven't encountered injury from a fall or further complications from a fall probably do not understand how very serious it can be. But it can, if you have already an underlying medical condition, having a fall that causes a wound can lead to much further complications. And so, it's a very, very important endeavor, and I really appreciate that you're taking it on. So, thank you.
Mr. Porter, from an administrative standpoint, we have a resolution. Do we do that now or do we do it later?
We'll wait till the county administrator's report.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Because we're, I'm gonna ask Chief Ryan to, Ash to come talk a little bit about what we see coming and what's going on.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we move to the VDOT quarterly update. Mr. Carroll. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, distinguished members of the board. I'm here to give James City County's quarterly transportation update for VDOT. The paper's out. We completed three hundred and sixty-six of five hundred and fourteen maintenance work orders in the past quarter. That's a hundred and forty-eight outstanding, seventy-one percent completion. Drainage was the largest of the outstanding at seventy-two, forty-six roadway, and then thirty vegetation. I will add that we have our VDOT Customer Service Center number in the handout also during the storm. If anybody has any issues with roadway, transportation, flooding, trees, please make sure to use that number or either our residency number at two five three five one three eight. A few highlights of the accomplishments this quarter. We repaired over four hundred potholes with over, and repaired roads with over two hundred tons of asphalt. We cleaned over three hundred and fifty pipes and culverts, ditch cleaning over eight thousand linear feet. We did roadway sweeping over thirty lane miles. And we also cut site distance at Adams Drive and Long Hill Road. We had emergency repairs that have been completed on Route sixty and Route thirty near Anderson's Corner. They were slope failures that were all the way up to the roadway. We have countywide mowing. The second, the second VDOT mowing, primary and secondary is complete. The second primary, James City County-sponsored mowing is complete. We are in the process of completing our third VDOT mowing for primary and secondary in the county. And we project that the end of September will be the last James City County-sponsored primary mowing. And then November will be our final primary and secondary mowing for the county. And then normally, January, February timeframe, we do a countywide litter removal, litter pickup on our secondary and primary roads. I'm not gonna go through all the projects tonight, but I-64 widening, segment two and segment three are both under construction. We do have the, I do want to bring to your attention the ITTF, Interior Operations Improvement Project that includes Route sixty, Route one forty-three, Route one ninety-nine, sixty-four. And what it does, it's gonna install dynamic message signs. It gives us closed-circuit television video surveillance cameras and broadband modems on one ninety-nine to create, creates an alternative for I-64. So, if something happens out there within the construction project, we're able to put on our verbal message signs, you know, accident ahead, you know, please use alternate route, and be able to see control or at least to gauge the traffic use on sixty-four and one ninety-nine, especially during the construction period. I will say that the Jamestown Ferry Boat is currently, is in the water, and it floated. So, that is a good thing. We are looking sometime between October and January for this thing come on in from Mississippi. The, I will say that, I'll add to this, the Jamestown Scotland Ferry will stop operations at ten AM tomorrow morning because of the impeding storm that's coming on us, Hurricane Florence. So, please, please make note of that if you are traveling to the Surrey side tomorrow. The rest of the project's pretty much on schedule. Hasn't been a lot of changes since our last meeting. Certainly, address any of them if you have any questions. I will get into the traffic studies, the one ninety-nine Mounts Bay intersection out here. We're adjusting the signal timing to the lead with a through movement and a lag turning vehicle. So, we're trying to push more vehicles through the intersection as the priority. Also, we have lead drive. We are installing twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit signs. That was statutory, unposted prior to that. We have John Rolfe Lane and Heritage Landing Road. We install stop-ahead signs on the Virginia Capitol Trail. Prior to these intersections, there was issues with vehicles stopping as they were leaving the intersection to let Virginia Track, Virginia Capitol Trail users cross the roadway. It was causing some safety issues. Monticello Avenue, we reviewed the locations of the flashing yellow arrows along Monticello. One that stands out, we're gonna adjust the phasing for the flashing yellow arrow at the Monticello Marketplace, where it will not be in action between noon and six PM. Of all the accidents that have happened at that intersection, the side accidents, all of them have happened between noon and six PM. So, I believe there was ten total, eight of them, we think, or, you know, are side angle crashes. So, we're hoping that suspending the FYA at that intersection during that time, sort of the busiest, busiest times, will help improve the safety there. We have a few under review, stop sign reviews, curb delineation reviews, ramp delineation, speed limits, and entrance reviews. I will add that VDOT is working towards preparations for our Hurricane Florence that is scheduled to make landfall in O'Kellana sometime early Friday morning. And we've gone over our emergency operations plans, our staffing plans. We've gone and done a lot of prep work at our historically flood-prone areas, trying to make sure that the pipes are open, that the drainage ways are open, cleaning those out with our Vector truck. We've done a lot of prep work prior to that. I-64, we've, we do not have any lane closures for construction and all because of the evacuation of Zone A. So, we're making sure that there's two lanes. There will not be a contraflow on the peninsula for I-64. We are well past that time at this point. And I will add that Cranston's Mill Pond, we will be closing that to through traffic just as the county is also for Jolly Pond tomorrow afternoon, just as precautionary. It's an area that typically floods with a good rain. So, it's pretty imminent that it's gonna flood during this event. So, it services very few users. The schools are gonna be closed, so it should not, should not impede school transportation. So, that concludes my quarterly update for the county. And be willing to take any questions or give on anything additional.
I guess I'll start off with just a couple of quick things. Recognizing that you're gonna close down those two roads that go over a dam, will there be an inspection before the roads are opened up again, just to make sure things are in good shape?
Once the water resides, hopefully the road is there, yes.
And the only other thing I wanted to just mention was the completion of the Route one ninety-nine Brookwood Drive intersection has really been a very well-done project, I think. It seems to have really improved traffic flow there, and it was done very expeditiously without interference with traffic. So, I want to congratulate you all on a good job there.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to make sure that my fellow board members saw the response we'd gotten to my inquiry earlier from Mr. Carroll. He had sent us a copy of a traffic study airport, on Airport Road. And I think many of you have maybe fielded some phone calls about the problems over there. And if you've experienced it, it's really ugly at certain times of the day. I thought that was extremely well-done. It highlighted all the problems that I, people have called me about. And I think where we are is at a point, I'd like to maybe have discussions internally amongst us one-on-one and then sit down with him and try to come up with a priority list of things we could do to alleviate, based upon this study, to alleviate the problem over there, maybe starting with the least expensive and working our way up and try to see what we could get to take care of that because that's been a recurring problem we've had with complaints in the past. And the other question I had, and this is something that I think we may need to have further discussions on, Mr. Carroll, is the, we talked about your policy on the flashing yellows. And I think they're relatively new. They seem to be very effective in moving traffic a lot better in certain places. Of course, some high-traffic areas, like you just mentioned, where you had to limit them because of potential for crash. But we've had a couple of new traffic lights, or one new traffic light on Ironbound over a part of Newtown. I think it's at Watford Lane. I think it's at Watford Lane, and there are a tremendous number of people who live right back, short block in there. There's a very high-density housing, and a lot of people are sitting there at that traffic light waiting to turn when it's nobody coming, nobody going. And, you know, if it's one of those where we could work one of those in, I think that would probably help move traffic a little bit better without having people sit and wait for an extended period of time. So that's, that's one, you know, and maybe you can help us understand the maybe financial constraints on, on doing it and where priorities would lie on how we could do it.
And, and you're right. I mean, the FYAs do certainly minimize congestion when, when applied at the right locations where there's ample site distance and, and they meet our requirements. We try, these aren't, they aren't free. They, we certainly try to use these at the areas where we get the most benefit, that we service the most vehicles and we get, that minimize the most congestion, congestion. So there are three, there were two, now there are three lights on Ironbound. None of, none of the, the intersections on Ironbound actually have the FYA, really because of the number of vehicles that it services. We used, we were luckily enough, lucky enough to use some open container funds to, which allowed us to kind of put the initial FYAs out and on intersections that, that we deemed as priorities. I'm not saying that FYAs wouldn't be nice to have at a lot of intersections. And I know, I know this particular intersection, signalized intersection is, is new. So these, these users aren't really used to have to stop and wait for oncoming traffic or wait for, for a light to signal through. But I will say that, that yes, it probably, I haven't looked at it for line of sight or anything of that nature. It would be nice to have, but it is not one of the identified priority intersections that we've, we've identified. So if I get additional money to do FYAs, I try to look at the, at the more heavily-used areas that would, would minimize congestion, whether it's rush hours or, or peak hours or not. I will say that signals, even though may create longer times for turning movements or, or through movements, sometimes they are safer. I will say that that same intersection, about two weeks before, before that signal went into, cycled through and went into production or, or, you know, started its signals, we had a head-on or, or T-bone right at that intersection that, that had some injuries involved in it about two weeks before. So it, it, it started getting enough traffic, it meet, it met the, it met the warrants, the, the user warrants. So certainly we'll continue to review it, and, and if we can, we certainly will.
Last thing I had was the, the potential we had for that crosswalk of Ironbound over from, on, at Oldfield from the, from the park. I gather we're at a point right now where the thing we need to do is sit down between the county folks and you all and try to identify how we're going to pay for something like that.
Yes, I think most of the work we can do in-house. I've talked to our, to our installation and maintenance group for, we, we'll have to use the rectangular rapid beacon, flashing beacons for that intersection, for that intersection crossing at Oldfield and Ironbound.
I, I think it's, it's of great interest to the folks in the community because I've had an email again today of two potential automobile pedestrian near misses the last two weekends.
I, I do suggest that there is a crosswalk at Ironbound. I know it's at, at News, I know it's a little bit further, but it's certainly safer to use the current crosswalk versus just running across Ironbound Road. It's a heavily, heavily used road. This, once this isn't, crosswalk is installed, it will have the rapid flashing beacons, but you do have merged traffic coming into this area. So the driver is looking at a lot of things, cars behind them, cars in front of them, trying to merge for the intersection improvements at News. So I, I really, I really want to stress that, you know, even if there's a crosswalk there, there's, there's going to be a, there needs to take a lot of precaution in crossing at this area. I have some, sort of some mixed emotions about this crossing just because of the location that it is. But I think it will, it will serve that area as a direct route, a paved direct route, and they don't have to cross the ditch. But, but yeah, it's just a, a matter of scheduling, funding, and getting it done.
Thank you, appreciate your, your help.
I have a couple of questions for you. I did receive a phone call this week from a citizen out off of Rochambeau, close to the Wilderness Drive Lane area out there, talking about some shoulder issues. And I spoke with Mr. Purse, and perhaps once we get through the storm, y'all can coordinate. I'm not sure exact, the exact location, but he was expressing concern about some of the shoulder areas that they were dangerous. I don't know if some of them have washed off.
This is on Rochambeau? Okay.
Around that area. He did, he was complaining about some of the culverts being blocked and a lot of ponding that was resulting in a lot of mosquitoes and a lot of just dangerous standing water in that area. So I wanted to pass that on to you, especially with all this getting ready to happen. And also with the increased building out at Whitehall, I'm still requesting, had schools back in, and folks are looking for a stoplight out there close to Stonehouse Elementary. So just putting that on your, on your radar, because we do have more folks that are out in that area. So those are my two Rochambeau issues this evening.
And if, I will add to whoever wrote you the email, if they would call in to our customer service center and do a work order, be able to track it, it'll let them know when we have it scheduled, let them know when it's complete as a follow-up. You know, it has things in place that'll keep them in the loop on that, as that process goes through.
Might need to make a phone call, maybe an, an email.
We, you can do it by email as well.
No, I'm, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't think that perhaps they email, so we can.
Either way.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your help.
I've got a couple. You addressed Cranston's Mill Pond a little bit. Going by there all the time, and, and, you know, and knowing that the dam was decreased one foot, it allows more water to flow over than used to flow over. And it seems like upstream, we're getting more water as, as it is in the Mill Pond. Of course, we all know now that it, it floods when we get a good rain, much less what we're planning on getting. I looked at the culverts, and some of them are half-buried to, that, that don't allow as much water to go through the culvert in there, and it's just, it's, it's just over time and nature and, you know, the beast. And, and if we could look at that section and, and maybe we need to redo the culverts in there to a larger size or something to, to get more flow through there to, you know, and, and take a section of the road out and replace the culverts in order to get more flow through there and then put that back. If you would just look into that and see if that's a, if it's a possibility. I know, you know, with, with funding, with being on HR tech, there's, there's no funding for anything as far as transportation. We're trying to get it, but it's hard to find those numbers and.
What, what I can do is, is have our hydraulic engineer do a review and just come up with a recommendation, see what comes up, you know, and that way he can look at how much CFMs coming across the dam on a, you know, ten-year event, fifty-year event, hundred-year event.
And they, and they've got the records there now. I just, all of us taking the tour of the, of the facility, but now they've got all the records of everything to the tenth of what's coming in and out of there. So that, that should be very helpful as far as the flow coming into, you know, your road.
How many acres, how many acres actually fall into that drainage?
Quite a bit. It's, it's surprising how much comes into there. Chickahominy Road, or not Chickahominy Road, but Chickahominy Neighborhood Haven, they're, they're having, they're, they're going to flood. You know, they always flood certain areas, and the more water, the more chances that they're flooding. There, I've had quite a few of them tell me the problem that they're having out there is, is the people will come down to, to tour the flood, and when they do, they fly through the neighborhood, and it puts a wash up into their house where water wouldn't have gotten in there, some of them that are close to the road, and they're trying to get the water out, and they get, if, if we could do a sign or something that says residents only during this, a rain event or something that, you know, that, that would keep people just riding down there just to look and see that it's flooded. Because we have the same problem in the fire department, you know, we're trying to get people out, and that's what's hanging, and you got people riding around just to see the, and I know, I understand, they want to see what it looks like, I understand that, but it, it does harm some of the stuff that the citizens are dealing with down there where the house is flooded, and somebody's causing a wave to go through their front door.
We, we would be glad to barricade that out, road close to high water. It is, it is, a lot of it's tidal.
Yes.
So, you know, it kind of comes and goes.
It does.
But if, if somebody in the community that I could contact could kind of control, that's the barricades back and forth, I don't have any problem staging something there for them.
I can put, I can get you several names that will move it in and out, you know, during the, yeah, not a problem. I'll email you, we'll get, we'll get together on that. And of course, with, with Interstate sixty-four, third phase getting ready to start, last, I think it was Saturday, we were blocked up from the Old Outlet Mall, Harris Teeter, all the way back into Twana, and there was some event going on in the interstate. And of course, the cars are coming, but if you could check the signalization of all the lights, we might have to change them for the time period that we're doing the interstate in order to get people through there as quickly as possible. And I notice so much you can do. Traffic's going to be traffic, they come off the interstate, we're jammed. We'll, it'll stop everything in Lightfoot, Twana, Norge, and just to keep that flowing as, as we go through this process, because, you know, we're going to be married to this for what, three, three, about a year. So we might as well plan ahead of time and see if we can get that flow moving. And the one ninety-nine light in Williamsburg, if you can check that as well, that it's synchronized to all the others.
About thirty-one?
Yes. And that way, we can make sure if they're coming off the interstate that way, that seems to be the jam right there.
Can't synchronize them right now.
Okay.
We are working, I'm hoping this ITTF will give me the ability so they can talk.
Okay.
They're, they're just too far away, and I do not have any bandwidth and fiber, I do not have fiber along one ninety-nine. So I cannot link them together. We've been trying to get the NSYNC system, sort of like we do in Monticello.
Right.
For that section, we're working towards it. I just can't do it right this second, because I just don't have the communication capacity.
And I'm sure Williamsburg has enough money to pay for, no, just kidding.
Actually, we, actually, we maintain those signals, so all the signals are with us. So, but yeah, we, we've tried to, you know, we look at those constantly in trying to set, we've, we've done signal reviews all the way from Route five, all the way through, past Brookwood to, oh, Henry, what is it? What's the next one? Help me out.
South Henry.
South Henry. You know, trying to get, connect all those together and make sure they try to stay on sort of a, some, sort of the same cycle. So you, you don't get through five and then you stop at thirty-one. You get thirty-one, stop at Brookwood. We're trying to keep that, but they're not talking to each other.
Okay. All right, well, at least we're looking into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Carroll.
First, I want to thank you profusely for all the help that you gave me on the Jamestown Road issue that we have near Lake Powell, and we've got the increased signage, we've, and you've done some cutback of the foliage, so. But I will tell you, those citizens are going to continue to keep an, an eye out and make sure that, that they, they're hopeful that it's helping, but they'll let us know if it's not. So we'll be talking, I'm sure. I, I wanted to, you said that you all had done extra cleanup in areas, so I'm, I'm just checking, is sixteen oh seven area in that? I know Mr. Purse had reached out.
Sixteen oh seven.
Jamestown Road, was that part of?
It has been completed.
Okay, great. And you, the, the hours of twelve to six on Monticello Marketplace when you're not going to do the flashing yellow, when does that begin? Or has it already?
I, I, I don't have, I don't think it's began yet. I don't, I'll have to check with our signal techs. I'm not sure when they have it scheduled.
Okay, but it's coming.
It's coming. If it hasn't already been implemented.
Okay, thank you. And then I had, I don't know that this is necessarily you, but maybe you can tell me who or if I need to call that one eight-hundred number. I had said at our last meeting, I was concerned about the amount of foliage around our signage for, like, out on one ninety-nine, that we're appointing tourists especially towards the food, Colonial Williamsburg, those type of things, Jamestown.
Wayfinding signs, the.
Yeah, there seemed to be a lot of, a lot of blockage there, and is that budget-related? Have you?
We have a third-party, Virginia Logos, that does, and I'll, and I'll talk to their project manager for this area.
Okay.
We can help in that as well. We try to, we call it daylight signs, so that you can see them as you come down roadways. But every year, spring and summer, it just seems to close up a little bit more, and, and as foliage comes on, it'll get better as winter, but, but it does take an effort to go out and, and try to cut back to daylight those signs, so you're right.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
On, coming from Williamsburg into Lightfoot in the right-hand lane, there's a section of a hedgerow that's probably fifteen foot or better tall, that's really encroaching on the Route sixty.
Eric, where again?
It's, it's in between Williamsburg, or it's in, it's been between Airport Road and Lightfoot. There's a big hedgerow right there before one ninety-nine. You'll see it when you ride down there, and it's about that far off the white line, and you can see where the cars are trimming it, but, you know.
That's on Richmond Road.
Richmond Road.
And so if you'll just check that, and if we can cut that back a little bit to keep from cars catching that as they're going through there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That brings us to the consent calendar. Tonight's consent calendar consists of minutes, adoption, August fourteenth, twenty eighteen, regular meeting, historic minutes approval, grant award Department of Motor Vehicles, alcohol enforcement, eighteen thousand eight hundred, grant award Department of Motor Vehicles, occupant protection, five thousand two hundred and fifty-six, grant award Department of Motor Vehicles, speed enforcement, eighteen thousand, and a confirmed declaration of a local emergency. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
Motion for approval?
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Ms. Sattler?
Aye.
Mr. McGinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. That brings us to public hearings tonight. Our Planning Commission representative is Tim O'Connor. Also, our AFD chair is Chris Taylor. We begin with Z zero 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 one dash two zero one eight Colonial Manor. Roberta Suloff is right here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Dr. Pedro Becerra has applied on behalf of B.C. Secure Holdings to rezone approximately seven point four acres of land located at eight six seven nine Pocahontas Trail from R five multifamily residential with proffers to MU mixed-use with proffers. This rezoning would permit the operation of a mixed-use building and to include the uses of independent living, assisted living, skilled nursing, and a medical office. The property is located inside the primary service area and is designated low-density residential by the adopted comprehensive plan. This facility has operated as a continuing care retirement community, or CCRC, including the services of independent living, skilled nurses, and assisted living for almost two decades. Colonial Manor currently offers physical therapy services exclusively to its residents. This use is considered accessory to the CCRC and is permitted by the current zoning district. The applicant would like to extend those services as an outpatient physical therapy office to the general public. This use, medical office as defined in the zoning ordinance, would no longer be considered accessory to the CCRC and is not permitted under the R five district, thus the need to rezon to a district that would allow all three uses in one building. While the applicant is proposing a new use, the proposal does not include any expansion to the physical footprint of the existing building. The applicant is proffering conditions which are intended to limit the impact of the added use and the use potential of the new district and preserve the existing protections provided by current proffers and SEP conditions. The proffers include limits on occupancy and uses permitted on the property, as well as provisions for buffering, traffic, landscape, and signage. Additionally, the development would be subject to a binding master plan, which was included in tonight's packet, and specifically calls out square footage and density limits for each use. Staff finds the proposal to be consistent with the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, and surrounding development, and recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this application and accept the voluntary proffers included in tonight's packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is available as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, first of all, let me just thank you, Ms. Suloff, for the very good staff report that you did in this case. Um, can, can you just, uh, uh, verify the information you provided to me that because of the binding master plan, essentially, any change in the utilization of this land with the rezoning would require, uh, coming back to the board for approvals?
That is correct. If the applicant wished to add uses permitted on the property, or if the property changed hands and the new owner would like to pursue new uses, they'd have to come back through the Board of Supervisors because of both the binding master plan and the proffers, which limit the uses on the property to those stated in the application.
And is the current use of, of the facility in complete conformance with our, um, uh, billing ordinances and, and requirements?
Yes, yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Good evening. Not much to add, I'm just gonna clarify the, the proffer conditions, that the planning commission was comfortable knowing that if there were gonna be any future changes to the uses, it would have to come back through the legislative process. So, happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. That will open the public hearing. Are there any speakers? With that, we will close the public hearing, and I'll- The applicant like to speak? Okay, thank you. Thank you. That'll look-
Cameron Larson, I'd, I'd move the, uh, I'd move the resolutions contained in our packet approving this, uh, rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Ms. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, it brings us to the Agriculture and Forestry District, twenty eighteen renewals. Uh, we have Savannah Pytrowski with us. Hello.
Hello. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. There are currently thirteen agricultural and forestal districts in the county, twelve of which are set to expire in October of this year. As required by state code, the county must review all established AFDs prior to their expiration. During this review, districts must be continued, modified, or terminated. State code also provides that all AFD property owners have an opportunity to withdraw any or all of their property from the AFD during the renewal periods. The Croker District currently consists of twenty-three properties totaling approximately one thousand one hundred and eighty-two acres. Staff has not received any withdrawal requests for this district, and no changes are proposed to these conditions. The Hill Pleasant Farm District currently consists of four properties totaling approximately five hundred and eighty-eight acres. Staff has received a request to withdraw one twenty-seven acre parcel from the district. No changes are proposed to the conditions. The Barn Swamp District currently consists of thirty properties totaling approximately one thousand seven hundred and twenty acres. Staff has received three withdrawal requests, removing approximately sixty-six acres from the district. No changes are proposed to the conditions. The Cranston's Pond District currently consists of six properties totaling approximately seven hundred and seventy-four acres. Staff has not received any withdrawal requests for this district, and no changes are proposed to the conditions. The Mill Creek District currently consists of thirty-five properties totaling approximately three thousand two hundred and fourteen acres. Staff has received one withdrawal request for this district, withdrawing approximately five acres. No changes are proposed to the conditions. The Gordon Creek District currently consists of thirty-five properties totaling approximately three thousand one hundred and twenty-eight acres. Staff has received withdrawal requests for five parcels in this district, withdrawing a total of approximately sixty-three acres. No changes are proposed to these conditions. The Christiansen's Corner District currently consists of seven properties totaling approximately one thousand one hundred and seventy-nine acres. Staff has not received any withdrawal requests, and no changes are proposed to the conditions of this district. The Yarmouth District currently consists of thirteen properties totaling approximately two thousand one hundred and forty-three acres. Staff has not received any withdrawal requests for this district, and no changes are proposed to the conditions. The Gospel Spreading Church District currently consists of eight properties totaling approximately one thousand one hundred and thirty-three acres. Staff has not received any withdrawal requests for this district, and no changes are proposed to the conditions. The Armistead District consists of four properties totaling approximately three hundred and twelve acres. Staff has not received any withdrawal requests for this district, and no changes are proposed to the conditions. The Wright's Island District currently consists of six properties totaling approximately one thousand four hundred and ninety-seven acres. Staff has received one withdrawal request for this district, and there is also a recommended revision to condition number two referencing the most recent version of the Board of Supervisors' policy pertaining to the withdrawal of lands from the AFDs. The Carter's Grove District currently consists of two properties totaling approximately three hundred and sixteen acres. Staff has not received any withdrawal requests for this district, and no changes are proposed to the conditions. At its June twenty-first meeting, the AFD Advisory Committee voted nine to zero to recommend the continuation of these districts. At its August first meeting, the Planning Commission voted five to zero to also recommend continuation of the districts. Staff finds these districts to be compatible with the requirements of state code and surrounding development, as well as consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances. Staff also recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the renewal of these districts for a period of four years, with the exception of the Wright's Island District, which has historically been renewed for eight years. Each would be subject to the conditions and their respective district ordinances. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Um, yeah, two questions. Are the numbers of, uh, acre, number of withdrawals or the total acreage withdrawn on this recycle, um, consistent with what typically happens, or is it a significantly higher withdrawal rate than we've had in the past?
I am not sure of the exact numbers of acreages that have been withdrawn before, um, but just from an anecdotal perspective, it didn't seem to jump out at me as a higher.
Okay, it's, it's not a significant change that staff has noticed, then, okay. Um, and then the only other question I had, had to do with the one thing you mentioned about one of the conditions. Was that to update a condition on that to, to reflect what our current policy is?
Yes, for the Wright's Island District, that one only gets renewed every eight years. So, the policy's been changed since then. The other ones were already reflected.
Thank you, that clears that up for me.
I'd just like to make a, a comment. When we did approve that previous, uh, the, rather, previous AFD in July, I made the point that I would hope that in the future, we would offer, um, the applicants the, the opportunity to renew for longer periods of time. I understand the, the desire to have consistency, but I think we could have that consistency while at the same time, uh, providing a longer timeframe, more predictability over time, reducing the costs of, of applicants and, uh, their efforts to get renewals. And so, I hope that, uh, we will think about, and I know that, um, I raised this issue after this had already gone through the AFD and, and, um, heading for the Planning Commission, uh, but that staff would evaluate the, um, uh, opportunities that we might have to ask people to consider extending these AFDs for a longer period of time than the four years that's become sort of standard, uh, and, and, uh, not require that they do more than that, but at least, uh, encourage them to think about doing longer periods of time. So, I'll just, uh, mention that so that it'll be reflected in the minutes of, of this meeting, uh, as we go forward.
Is Mr. Taylor here or Ms.?
He was not able to make it this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right, I am going to open the public hearings for each and every one of the following agriculture and forestal district renewals. AFD zero one dash eight nine dash one dash two zero one eight Armistead. AFD dash zero five dash eight six dash one dash two zero one eight Barn Swamp. AFD dash zero one dash zero two dash one dash two zero one eight Carter's Grove. AFD dash ten dash eight six dash one dash two zero one eight Christiansen's Corner. AFD dash zero six dash eight six dash one dash two zero one eight Cranston's Pond. AFD dash zero two eight six one two zero one eight Croker. AFD dash zero nine dash eight six dash one dash twenty eighteen Gordon Creek. AFD dash one two dash eight six dash one two zero one eight Gospel Spreading Farm. AFD dash zero three eight six dash one dash two zero one eight Hill Pleasant Farm. AFD dash zero seven dash eight six dash one dash two zero one eight Mill Creek. AFD dash zero one dash nine four dash one dash two zero one eight Wright's Island. And AFD dash one one dash eight six dash one dash two zero one eight Yarmouth Island. Are there any speakers? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing. And I will look for the board.
I will move the adoption of all of those that you just recited.
Do I need to read those all out?
We all understand it's all of them.
Okay, great. Whew, Mr. Porter.
Ms. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler? Ms. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and I want to thank all of you for that, and thank you, Mr. Kinsman, for, appreciate that. That brings us to board considerations. Authorization to purchase thirteen police vehicles, three hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and forty-five, and that is Deputy Chief Rubino.
Hello again. These thirteen vehicles are three vehicles that are for brand-new positions that were authorized in FY nineteen budget, and ten vehicles that are replacement vehicles to replace vehicles, uh, in our fleet that are aging with well over a hundred thousand miles on those vehicles. The vehicles are, uh, models two thousand eighteen Chargers, which is the same make and model as other vehicles in our fleet, which provides for ease of maintenance and supply of parts. The purchase of these vehicles, uh, this model has been evaluated by fleet and meets the needs of the police department. The cost, three hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars, is allowed within the budget and was budgeted in the FY nineteen budget. The contract is a cooperative purchasing contract. Both PD, fleet, and purchasing staff examined different options. The lowest procurement method was selected, which is this procurement contract. Cooperative procurement action is authorized by section, chap, uh, chapter, chapter one, excuse me, section five of the James City County Purchasing Policy and the Virginia Public Procurement Act. Staff believes that county will benefit, uh, from increased efficiency, reduced admin expenses, and will also benefit from an accelerated delivery process. Staff recommends the adoption of this resolution authorizing the procurement of thirteen new police vehicles for a total cost of three hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars. And I would be happy to address any questions the board may have.
To the board then.
Motion for approval?
Mr. Porter?
Ms. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan? Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Ms. Larson, motion carries.
With that, comes to VRS benefits, Mr. Porter.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, you have a memo, uh, in your package, basically, uh, asking for two actions, but not on the, the longest part of the memo, that, that is, uh, the Virginia retirement system has, with James City County, as a, the employer, the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission, and the Williamsburg area Transit Authority, or WADA. Even though both of those are governmental entities, and they can be on their own with VR, VRS, uh, they have not been so, I guess, since the formation of them, simply from administrative efficiency. In FY fifteen, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board updated its financial reporting, uh, requirements, and it included the listing of all liabilities and the pension liabilities, and that would include both the Middle Peninsula Regional, uh, Juvenile Detention Center and WADA, uh, when they can both carry those liabilities on their own books. So, in September, the, uh, seventeen, uh, they both requested this actuarial study. That is, it was completed in twenty eighteen, and both, uh, the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Center and WADA realized the lower, uh, employee contribution rate. It dropped about two point eight, uh, I mean, excuse me, point two eight percent, uh, twenty-eight hundred per, of a percent. No county board action is needed for the, for this. The board for both WADA and the Middle, uh, Peninsula Juvenile Detention Center will take action, so that it'll be effective January one of nineteen. At the same time, uh, we asked for two additional, uh, actuarial studies, uh, for employees for the fiscal year twenty nineteen budget, and we received that, uh, those studies back this August. Uh, and currently, the VRS offers a Plan One employer reduced entitlement, uh, benefits of fifty thirty. The county, uh, now offers, uh, because of our early start and the changes that have happened over time, the county offered un-reduced benefit of fifty-five thirty. And we're only one, uh, one of, of the, uh, the thirty-one entities of over four hundred total entities that still have the fifty-five thirty. And so, we're looking, we're asking that the board go with the new, uh, benefits of fifty thirty, uh, that will also apply to both the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Center and WADA, because they're becoming, they're new members, so they automatically have that. That's not an option to go to fifty-five thirty anymore. Uh, additionally, the Code of Virginia allows for, uh, enhanced benefits, uh, for police, fire, and emergency, uh, medical technicians. We presently have, uh, the one point, uh, seven oh percent, and there is the option of going to one point eight five, uh, for law enforcement, firefighters, and emergency, uh, medical technician. We are requesting that we be able to go to the one point eight five modifier, and, uh, that's gone, ongoing estimate of the cost of a, about eighty-one hundredths of a percent. The fiscal year nineteen, uh, budget, uh, it's year, the twenty, in the twenty twenties, yes, twenty twenty, VRS rates, uh, are at nine, we estimate them to be nine point three seven. They came in at eight point seven percent. Uh, so, the overall budget impact between the savings and the enhanced benefit is, uh, point four five percent. It's estimated to be less than a hundred thousand dollars and would be funded through the VRS savings for the first six months. And a reserve has been set, set aside for the twenty twenty budget that'll sufficiently address the, uh, increase, uh, over the coming years. So, staff is recommending that you pass the, adopt the attached resolution offering the, uh, fifty thirty and the one point eight five for law enforcement, uh, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians, effective January one, twenty nineteen. If you have any questions, uh, I'd be trying to, be glad to try to answer them. Ask soon.
Actually, Bill, I thought that the, this, the staff report was very clear. It's very well-written, very good. You know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased that it's coming forward at this point, because, you know, if you take a look at around us, uh, the, the communities that we compete with for talent, uh, are taking care of their people a little better than we are, uh, and I think it's time we got on board with, uh, getting up to this, especially the, for the, uh, police, uh, and the, uh, fire and EMS. The one point eight five, I know, is a big, big issue for them, um, and being able to get this six months earlier than, than maybe we had originally thought we could is, is a, a, a good, uh, good move. So, I, I strongly support both of these. And then technically, uh, do we need to vote on both of these separately?
Yes, actually.
Okay, very good.
These are VRS ones, and so they're gonna want both of them separately.
Very good.
Like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll move the, uh, adoption of the, uh, fifty-five, uh, the fifty thirty resolution.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I'll also move the one point eight five.
Mr. Porter?
All right. Ms. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson? Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, that brings us to board requests and directives. And, um, unless we want to go to, um, JCSA before that? Do that, and then we'll finish out with your county administrator's report? Or do you want to go ahead and do the, the update now?
It doesn't, it's, it's up to you all. I can do it either way.
Uh, I tell you what, let- I tell you what, let's do board, that way we can get the people that are preparing for the storm out of here. Yeah, instead of sitting in here. When I said that, they probably all went, what, what, what are you talking about? So we're going to proceed with board requests and directives.
I just had, one thing I wanted to mention, and that is that on Saturday, WADA celebrated their tenth anniversary as an authority and over forty years of service to public transit in the Williamsburg area, starting with, as James City County Transit Company. And I was fortunate enough to be able to attend that ceremony and congratulate WADA and read the proclamation from the board to the organization. Appreciate the opportunity to highlight the fact that we are served well by a public transit authority that, and this year will provide more than nine hundred and forty thousand rides in our community, and that's quite a major accomplishment, and I expect that we will continue to see growth in that area in the future. But thank you very much.
I had the opportunity to go to a VACO summit up in Fredericksburg with Mr. McGlinnan, and Renee Alderman was also there, and it was very enlightening. There are a couple of things that I think came out of it that the board will need to be considering when we look at our legislative agenda, that there's some, some very interesting developments coming down the road for next legislative session. On the thirtieth of August, I always had the opportunity, believe it or not, to sit down with representative from Publix, and they have actually held a job fair this last couple, last weekend, and they are on schedule, I am, in my understanding, is to open sometime around mid-October. They'll give us a hard date as they get a little closer in, and we're eagerly looking forward to the opening of that thing, and I'm going to ask them to put in a separate big aisle for water and milk and bread and toilet papers, close by to the house. And then finally, I had a short notice opportunity to go to something on the seventh with Bill Porter, our county administrator. We went to the naval weapons York, station at Yorktown, and the Marine Security Regiment, which is consolidating its headquarters there, has built a, a new, really spiffy rifle range, and we were invited to go do a ribbon cutting, which included a little more than just a ribbon cutting. We got to go out on the sniper course, which has ranges out to six hundred and twenty-five yards, and they had a demonstration set up. The three of the Marines sat down, and I think it was the naval station commander, the marine commander, and someone else, there were three of the high dignitaries, and they, they fired their five rounds from the sniper rifles at five hundred yards, little silhouette targets, and then they opened it up to those of us in the, in the audience, and Bill and I both got to perform, and we learned that being many, many, many years removed from our military service, it was a little different. Last time I did it was with an M1, with an open sight, and I had a hard time qualifying at a hundred yards, but this thing, my biggest problem was trying to look through the, there are no fixed sights. I had to look through the telescopic sight, and I had to take my glasses off to be able to do it, and everything was blurry, but I managed to hit five out of five, which was, probably says more about the weapon than it does about me.
Is that five out of five members of the audience?
It was five out of five on the silhouette, but it was, it was challenging, and I'll, I'll let Bill tell you about his score.
When they offered it, we knocked down about five people getting to the front of the line.
Well, I'll, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Okay. I'll spare you all of the details, because I know everybody's trying to get home to prepare. I will be doing the radio spot, WMBG, tomorrow evening, and I will have an update on some of the emergency details that everyone can tune in, and we'll have some more last-minute details for everybody. So everyone, please be safe, and thank you to all of our first responders. I know you're out there ready to go to make sure we're all well, so thank you all for that in advance.
And thank you, Sue, for taking that for me tomorrow, so I can leave then.
You're welcome. Good luck getting there.
Then, we've been doing a lot in HR Tac with VDOT and what's going on with the Haverford Rose Bridge Tunnel. I meant to send you all an article that I was in, in the Daily Press and in the Virginia Pilot. I'll send that over to you. I thought I'd, yes, thought I'd sent it in there and talked about the trussels leaving the tunnel and what deficiencies they had in the trussels, and how the cost may be two hundred and fifty to five hundred million dollars added to this already budgeted tight budget. But it's, it talked, there was a lot in there that you'll see that talks about how we're partnering with VDOT and helping them with this deficiency, something that was probably known, you know, couldn't be not known, I mean, but how we're trying to work through it and come together to get the project, so we don't shut it down in six years after we get it up and shut it back down to fix the trussels. But, you know, HR Tac is, only pays for new work, doesn't pay for repairs. So we're trying to figure out with, with how we can assist them to work in some of the new work while they work on some of the repairs and try to get it all, all a completed project. So there's, there's still a lot of work left on that. It's, it's a major project. You're looking at three point three to three point six billion dollars of funds that are going in that one project. So that's, that's an amazing project. Also like to, you know, talk about nine eleven, and what everybody, whether you were there or wherever you were, and what you went through, and I know we've got a lot of our police and fire and EMS people in-house, and, and they, it touches them sometimes more than it touches us, because they know their brothers and sisters are in harm's way when they go into anything, and they can just imagine what goes on on the scene and what's happening up in New York, and our hearts go out to all the people in New York tonight and what they had to go through back at nine eleven. And thank God, we're, you know, in better shape today than we were then, and we're blessed as a nation.
I will keep mine very brief this evening to get to the storm information. I do have a tourism council meeting on Tuesday, so if anybody has any input, this is just only our second meeting, so, but if anybody wants to give me any input, please let me know. I would, also, we have had a request by Economic Development Authority, if you would like to, Ms. Sadler?
No, go ahead.
Okay. The chair has asked that we postpone our joint session with them in order, because they are not going to be meeting this Thursday due to the storm, so they have asked for a postponement, so I just want to check in with the board to make sure that everyone's okay with that. Okay, great, thank you. And then I have been up at the EOC the last two days, and just have to give a huge thank you to staff, that, everybody that is working on this storm preparation. It is, it is an incredible effort by people on James City County staff, and I thank them, and we're about to hear all about what's going on. With that, Mr. Porter.
At the time, I'd like to ask the fire chief and Sarah to come up and give a brief update on what we see and what's happening. There's a lot of information going on, and we thought it would be a good time to get information out to the public.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having us this evening. I have Sarah Rue with me, our emergency manager. So we wanted to give you just touch basically a little bit, I started to put the weather update at the end, so you'd listen to everything else we said, but we decided that we'd start with what you were probably most interested in, was the 5:00 PM update from the National Hurricane Center. So the National Hurricane Center, the track, if you've been following it over the last few days, has ticked north, and it's gone west, and it's gone south, and yesterday at 5:00 PM, it started going north again, and it went again a little bit at 11:00 PM. Since this morning, it's been going back south and more of a western. So even the 5:00 PM update today, which I have in front of you is the newest from the National Hurricane Center, there'll be another one at 11:00 PM tonight. But that projected path, we're now kind of out of the cone of uncertainty, where we've been in it for a number of days, so that, that has ticked down a little bit, which is better for us. Certainly, the eye of the storm can still take any path within that cone of uncertainty. There are still, there's always those possibilities, while those decreasing possibilities, there is still that possibility that it could take a more northern turn. I expect, as the storm strengthens and intensifies and falls apart a little bit during I-WALL removal, that we may see some changes that, over the course of tomorrow, but that's where we are for right now. So the other thing we're following closely is, one, the track of the storm, two, what are the wind probabilities and what time would they arrive, and the third, rainfall. So this graphic shows you the most likely. You'll see two graphics out there. One is the earliest reasonable, and this is the most likely. So prior area, we're looking at Thursday night. So these are sustained tropical storm force winds, so that means they'd be thirty-nine miles an hour or higher for one minute average. So we certainly could encounter gusts before that. We could have sustained winds of, you know, twenty miles an hour before that, but we're looking at that Thursday, 8:00 PM. Of course, the more that track turns southerly and more westward, the less likely we are to be in that area, but those are. So you'll see, we're in about the, if you had the probabilities up there, we're in about the sixty percent probability of hurricane-force winds arriving Thursday, excuse me, tropical storm-force winds, thank you, Sarah, arriving Thursday evening. The last graphic we have is the expected rainfall. If you saw this at the eleven AM update this morning, we were in the fifteen to twenty-inch range, or ten to fifteen-inch range. We're now in the six to ten range. Again, certainly that could change, but things are looking a little better for us today than they were over the last couple of days. So still six to ten inches, still a significant amount of rainfall on top of what we've already had, and this graphic is a seven-day rainfall estimate. So on top of the three to five inches we've had over the last week or so, that's a significant amount of rain here. A little bit about what have we been doing since, since the storm was brewing off the coast of Africa and moving across the Atlantic. Really, we've got things ramped up on Friday, started with a call from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. We do conference calls with them throughout these storms. They have updates from National Weather Service. We engage all the departments. The representatives from all the departments in the county have been a part of those calls. They've been exercising their plans. We have had calls with Dominion Power, and there's also been some CAO calls. Ms. Larson participated, and Mr. Porter's been participating in the last couple of days. So staff's been reviewing all of our emergency plans, and those are things like emergency operations plans, what wind speeds do we stop responding at, and what are the things we do differently during emergencies compared to normal response. Our reviewing our sheltering plans, getting those up and running. Shelter staff's been briefed. They've been doing some just-in-time training to make sure everyone's squared away for doing that. Our damage assessment plans, so those are out following the storm. Once the winds have died down, it's safe enough to get out, and our damage assessment teams are out looking at homes and streets and power grid and all those types of things that we need to report up to the state and get resources coordinated for. And finally, debris management. After the response piece is over, and Grace would appreciate me saying this, but once our response piece is over with and we go back to normal operations, general services and solid waste staff is picking up with debris management that often goes on for months and months. So this past year, we instituted a new plan for that that meets the FEMA guidelines, so we can maximize reimbursement and timeframes, gauging all of our contractors who help us with that, and making, making sure those folks are ready and on alert. Most importantly, we've been doing some public information. Renee Domner, PO, has been doing a lot of social media posts, updates on our website. The sample you see there is a poster that they created, the graphics design team and Renee created. It's joint with the city of Williamsburg also, and that poster's gone out today with contact information and ways of getting more information. And then last, we're working on facility and equipment readiness. So those are things like make sure all our public safety vehicles and apparatus is repaired, and we maximize, we always have some out for repair or out for maintenance, getting all those back in service in time. Those are checking gutters and roof drains and generators and fueling up all of our equipment, and general services staff, JCSA staff, school staff has been doing a tremendous amount of work over the last few days, readying all those facilities. If in the event we open a shelter, which we expect and we might do on Thursday, if we do that, those are using schools, so we want to make sure all those facilities are ready, and the school system's been in coordination, so we've had representatives with them at all those meetings as well. So then the next important thing is, if you're citizens or business owners, what can you do now at this point to be, so Sarah's going to guide us through kind of what's next.
So what can you do? One of the best things that people can do, and we've been saying this for quite a while now, so it might sound familiar, go to, sign up for jccalert.org. We will be pushing out messages if we do open a shelter, or if there are any other major actions taken by the county, they will be pushed out through JCC Alert, and, and the normal means that Renee uses to push out that information. But if you sign up for JCC Alert, you can get the alerts via email, landline, cellphone, text messaging. There's tons of options. You need to, we're asking everybody to still check your emergency plans and supplies, so make a plan, get a kit, stay informed. And with that, I have a couple of suggestions above and beyond the websites that we have up here, which are great, and they give you some of the, you know, what should you have in your kit, the three days of food and water, and anything else that goes with that. There's some things that we have seen over the years that people might not think about. So one is make sure that you have some cash on hand. Personally, I use my credit cards or a debit card quite a bit, but if the power goes out, you know, some businesses might be willing to open with, you know, figuring out some way of opening, but they're probably not going to be able to take a credit card if the power's out, and a lot of places don't take checks anymore, so it might be a cash-only society, and the time to go get cash would be now, because ATM, ATMs run on electricity too, so if the power's out, you can't go to the ATM and get your cash. So that's one of those things to think about and prepare for beforehand. Also, along those lines, with the power possibly going out, one of the things that FEMA recommends is if, before, like, six hours before you expect the hurricane to hit, you turn your fridge and freezer up to the highest level, and you make sure that it's up there, and try not to open it a whole lot once the power does go out, because it will hold some of the coolant, and, and keep your food cold as long, for a while, as long as you don't constantly keep opening the fridge door or the freezer door. And then along with that, if you're leaving and going out of town somewhere, and you want to know if your fridge or freeze, if your freezer, if you lost power while you were gone, because you don't know, maybe it's back on by the time you get home, take an ice cube tray, and once it's frozen, once the ice is frozen, you put a quarter on top of one of the ice cube blocks, and if you come home and the quarter is at the bottom of the ice cube tray, then that means that you've lost power for too long, and you probably want to throw out your food. If it's still on top, you didn't lose power, didn't lose it for that long. So those are some simple other things, other than the, the other stuff that's on the websites. Flash.org for homeowners, there's great information on there, on steps you can take to prepare your home, cleaning out gutters, making sure that you secure any loose items around your house, propane tanks, lawn furniture, trampolines. I mean, we saw tons of trampolines when there was, during Hurricane Matthew in Virginia Beach, there was trampolines all over the place and trees and all over, so. And then for businesses, also, make sure you get prepared, have a continuity plan for businesses, and always, you know, just check on your neighbors, you know, know, know who they are, know if they have any needs or anything. Maybe you have a generator and wouldn't mind them coming over and, you know, having a cookout or, or something. You know, it's always good just to check on our neighbors and be friendly. And, okay, sorry. I remembered when he was going to start talking, so I'm sorry. One last thing, the, VDM has been having some problems with knowyourzone.org. So Kim and Renee have gotten together, and they have created James City County VA, know, forward slash, know your zone, and that is a county website. So along with the IT department. So if residents have a question and they can't get to the Virginia know your zone website, that has been created for them as well.
I think that kind of just, certainly those are very brief into the preparations that have gone on really since Friday. We met again over the weekend, and have been meeting pretty much constantly since Monday. So we're free to open, and we're open to answer any questions that you may have, and of course, we'll be monitoring the forecast tomorrow, and we'll have updates on social media and out to the board.
One you may want to share with the general public, going through a few of these storms with the fire department and all, a lot of people will, and especially in the wintertime, they'll, they'll get an ice storm, and they'll, we're out without power, we can't do anything, we can't cook, we can't. You can still flush a toilet with a bucket of water. You know, it doesn't matter what water it is, it doesn't have to be drinking water. Go out in the ditch and get water, flush your toilet. Just pour it right down the bowl. Another thing, a lot of people, their, their food went bad, and I said, you've got a grill on the back of your deck, and they don't think about that, you know. They get nervous about the storm, and, you know, it's not something that they think about, that they could start taking their stuff out of their freezers and refrigerators and cook them on the grill. And, you know, and when you tell somebody, we got a grill right there, they're like, I didn't think about that. So, you know, a couple of little things to help out.
ATM across the street already told me I, that had no more twenty-dollar bills.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. I've been hearing of ATMs all day that are out.
It certainly supplies. Stores have been down for a couple of days. I know the gas stations around town were packed today. I've heard of someplace that ran out of fuel for a while.
On the way over here, I went by the bank just to make a deposit, and they were already closed. So banks are closed, and so, it's going to be interesting.
Call bill, I'm sure.
He's got cash?
Thank you all very much.
Do you want the resolution for the Fall Prevention Week?
Oh, yes.
The Fall Prevention Week resolution.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Including your packet was a resolution about the presentation from Fall Prevention Week.
I'll move the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. You can just go in any order you want to.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Savin?
Aye.
Mr. Larson?
Aye.
Most than caring.
Thank you.
I'll be safe, be safe.
Why would anybody want to prevent fall? I'm ready to get done with summer.
I do have some closings to, to tell. The Economic Development Authority meeting for the September the 13th has been canceled. And you've also taken them off the agenda at their request for the work session. Jamestown Scotland Ferry, it was mentioned earlier, it was in service beginning Wednesday at 10:00 AM. The Neighborhood Forum, scheduled for the 12th, has been canceled. Chesapeake Bay and Wedlands Meeting, scheduled for the 12th, has been postponed until October the 10th. Then the Harvest Festival, scheduled for September the 15th, has been canceled, has not yet been rescheduled. The county offices, James City County offices, the, and parks, including the Rec Center, will be closed Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We'll check to see what's happening Sunday and make that call at that time.
Not for the offices, for the Rec Center?
Yes, that's right, yes.
Don't anybody panic.
No.
All right.
That's, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. We will not have a closed session this evening, and I, with that, I, before we adjourn our meeting, I will let, have you open your meeting.
I'll just do it like this.
Okay.
Mr. Powell?
Call to order, this James City Service Authority Board of Directors' regular meeting. Mr. Powell?
Good evening. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Any public comments this evening? None. Consent calendar, minutes, adoption, August 14, 2018, regular meeting. Two, water sampling rebate program.
With the adoption of the consent calendar?
Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Or considerations, oh, public hearings, none, I take it, for this evening?
No public hearings.
Or considerations, First Amendment to 2014 Hybrid Sewer Plan Memorandum of Agreement.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Just want to provide a little background on this resolution. In 2007, the James City Service Authority entered into a consent order with the Department of Environmental Quality, along with 13 other Hampton Roads jurisdictions, to address the issue of sewer system overflows. In 2014, the Service Authority, along with those localities, entered into an agreement with the Hampton Roads Sanitation District, in which the HRSD agreed to accept the responsibility for sewer system overflows after a number of improvements had been made to the regional system, and that date was estimated to be 2043, at which time HRSD would take, take over. With the emergence of the SWIFT project and the resources that are required to implement that project, it has pushed back the timeline to comply with the consent order and to address the sewer system overflows. Localities expressed concern about that, and as a result, HRSD has agreed to assume that liability sooner, now with the adoption of this resolution, as opposed to later. So this is a, this resolution is a positive for the localities, it alleviates that responsibility from us at an earlier date. I would recommend approval of the resolution that authorizes me to sign the agreement.
Recommendation for approval?
Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye. Or requests, directives?
Could I just ask a question? Mr. Hippel made mention of water. What will be the situation for customers of the JCSA and, and water availability during a situation where we might have power, widespread power outages?
I'm glad you asked, Mr. McGlinnan. I was prepared to discuss this during General Manager comments, but I'll just go ahead and...
Okay, I'll, I'll find...
No, I mean, I think it's the topic everybody's interested in, so. JCSA is taking all possible actions to ensure continuity of service during the impending weather event. We fueled all of our generators, we fueled all our vehicles, all of our equipment. We have a plan in place to staff the Five Forks Water Treatment Facility 24/7, and we have a plan in place to pre-position staff at the Operations Center on Tuning Road, so that we can respond to issues as soon as the conditions will, will allow. However, having said that, all residents should be prepared to be self-sufficient for at least three to five days, and that includes water. I would recommend that residents purchase enough water to last for that long, or to bottle water in enough, in a sufficient enough amount that they can be self-sufficient for three to five days. I would also recommend that residents fill bathtubs with water. To Mr. Hippel's point, that, if you do that, that can be used to help you flush your, flush your toilets. I, I do want to emphasize, however, that residents with grinder pumps, grinder pumps do not work without electricity, and so that trick won't work if you, if you have a grinder pump. And so if you do have a grinder pump, you should reduce your wastewater flow to an absolute minimum. JCSA does not own the grinder pump, and we are unable to service, we have about 1,000 of them, we're unable to service them due to an electric, power outage. So I did want to make that clear. I also wanted to say, in the event that, you know, in the event that the public water system becomes or is suspected of being contaminated, that does not happen often, we certainly hope it doesn't happen, we're taking all precautions to keep it from happening. But if the storm does what it's predicted to do, it could very easily, a tree can come up and bring a water line with it. If we can't get to it in a certain amount of time, or if it's in an area that's flooded, we may not even be able to find it for a certain period of time, and then you, you can have some issues. Again, we've taken all the precautions we can, but in a situation like that, we would issue a boil water notice, and if that happens, then residents should bring their water to a rolling boil for a minute, and then let it cool before they use it. So, you know, being a groundwater system, I think that our system is probably a little bit more resilient than a surface water system in situations like this, but certainly, certainly it's not foolproof. With the, with the weather, severe weather that's predicted, we could very easily have water line breaks, and it, it may take us, it may take us some time. First of all, we're not going to send people out in high winds and, and those types of conditions, but even once those conditions abate, it, it may take us some time to get to the, to the area to be able to, to fix it. So that's worst-case scenario.
Quick question, if I may. If, if we do have a situation where the water is questionable, and there's no power, how do you let people know?
We will use all of our means necessary, which would also include, we have Everbridge System, in which people can get text messages that they've signed up, so we have that available to us. The county does have an agreement with radio stations, so if residents have battery-operated radios, that we'll get the information out that way. So that would be our, those would probably be our two best ways to get it out if there's a, if there's a power outage, or widespread power outage. I've also been asked, I've also been asked, if residents are going to leave their home for a few days, should they turn their water off? That's never a bad idea. So, yeah, if, if a resident is going to get out of town for a few days, they, it probably is a good idea to go ahead and turn your water off. Probably not necessary, but it, it's never a bad idea.
So, do we, does, is Dominion aware of the neighborhoods? I'm talking about entire, I know there's individuals that are on grinder pumps, but...
Right, right.
And when we have an entire neighborhood in that situation, are they, because that seems like that could become a health issue fast. So are they aware of those neighborhoods, and what kind of conversation?
Right. I, I don't know if Virginia Power is specifically aware, but we do have some ability to work with Dominion Power to try to prioritize, we, we can try to prioritize those, those neighborhoods if that, if that becomes an issue.
Okay. It's because, I mean, not being able to have sewage could...
Yes. It's, it's, it has happened in previous events, and for those residents, it, it is difficult, no, no question.
Okay.
And did you have more for your...
The only other thing I wanted to add is, I tried to show these pictures last month unsuccessfully, but I did want to, since you had specifically approved two positions in the budget for a fire, for hydrant and valve program, I wanted to just give you a little visual of the, of the impact. This is a hydrant in Sand Hill, that's the before picture, and that's the after picture. So obviously, it looks a lot better. More importantly, we've put our hands on it and know that it works. That's really the more important part of the program, but it's also obviously a big improvement visually.
They're very happy about that, thank you.
So, I'm glad. And then also, Mr. Hippel had asked me to bring a picture of the pole shed, and so that is the pole shed that we, that the county staff built, JCSA staff built next to the lift station in the rear of Colonial Heritage, so.
There's a lot of work in that.
Yeah.
Good job. Tell them, they did a great job.
Thank you. I, I don't have any, any further updates.
Very good. Anybody have anything else? Good. That, I'll look for a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on October 9, 2018, for the regular meeting.
Motion.
So moved.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
We're adjourned.
Ready for motion?
Yes, if I could please have an emotion, motion for adjournment until 4:00 PM on September